Welcome, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone, as I call to order the May 7, 2022 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting, March 7, 2022, Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Waggie.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Here.
Alderman Shelton.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next item of business is amendment or approval of the agenda. I have one request, and that is to remove, under New Business Bill Number 6375. We just need a little more time on that.
That's correct.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any other changes? Any objection to approving the agenda by acclamation, saying none will be so approved? Thank you. Next up, Item 4. We have six recognitions tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first two are for elected officials, and so I will handle those. And right off the bat, we have one, the elected, former elected official is not in attendance tonight, and that's for Andy Leahy. He was the alderman for Ward 3 for well over, I believe it is over 22 years or 20 years about. He served the city of Brentwood, and he just couldn't make it tonight. But we do have a plaque for him, and we will get that plaque to him. And if you do want to thank him, all you have to do is show up at Mary Magdalene on a Saturday night for Saturday Mass, and you can see him, as he's one of the greeters. The next up is for former alderman Tom Kramer. I see Tom. Do you want to come on up, Tom?
Just for those of you who don't know, Tom was an alderman for Ward 4, but before that, he also served on a number of our committees. And we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize his service. We wanted to do it earlier, but COVID kind of kept us from doing it, as it kept us from doing a lot of things. I just want to list just a few things that Tom did for the city and for the residents. From 1999 to 2003, Tom was served on both the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Board of Adjustment. From 2003 to 2020, 18 years, 17, 18, if you add in the last year, he was an alderman for Ward 4. For 18 years, he did that. And I can tell you just by the few years that I've done that that's a tremendous commitment on anybody's part. While being an alderman, he acted as, he was also acting president of the Board of Aldermen. He was chairman of the Ways and Means Commission. He was chairman of the Communications Committee. He was member of the Public Safety Committee, a member of the Brentwood Chapter 353 Corporation, a member of the Public Works Committee. He was mayor pro tem. He initiated, co-authored the city's first-ever residential construction requirements ordinance, and he revived and co-authored the city's Landmark Architectural Review Board ordinance. So, on behalf of the city of Brentwood, Tom, we'd like to award to you, in recognition and appreciation for 21 years of service to the city of Brentwood, Alderman Ward 4, 2003 to 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission from 99 to 2003, we would have had all of them, but we would have had to put it on the back, and we just thought it was best. So, thank you again, Tom. Do appreciate it.
You here to say any words? You don't have.
It's great to be back here. I just want to say thank you to the folks of Ward 4 who entrusted me to represent them while I was able to provide the service. Really enjoyed my time. I look back fondly on my service with the city of Brentwood, back to the days when I was on Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning with Chairman John Geppert, rest his soul. Great times back then. Brentwood is like a shooting star that's just continuing to go higher and higher. I'm very proud of this city, and I'm honored that you all allowed me to work with you so well, the time that I spent here in the city of Brentwood, and I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I appreciate the opportunity. Similar to the first recognition, we've been delayed multiple times, some efforts here to recognize our folks. They've done some amazing work, and I hope to share their story as brief as possible. But the times come. We've moved through 2021. We've opened things up a little bit, and so I appreciate this opportunity. So, the first award that I would like to present has already been presented, just due to retired chief Terry Curtin not able to make it tonight. He's out of state, very happy in retirement, with a wide smile, and he's very happy. So, he was recognized by the Greater St. Louis Area Fire Chiefs Association for his dedicated service, and I quote, "untiring efforts in training, education, and service to the fire and emergency profession." So, thank you for allowing him to serve the city of Brentwood. He served for 10 years. Okay, our first award. Can the members from B shift from 2021, please come on in? As they are coming in, I will read a synopsis of what happened on May 18, 2021. Brentwood units responded to assist the Shrewsbury Fire Department with a tractor-trailer dangling over a bridge on eastbound Interstate 44. Remember that morning quite well. The news helicopters couldn't get there because of the weather, nor could the news trucks, the vans. So, we performed this rescue with one photographer from the post dispatch down on the parking lot of the MetroLink. It was very nice. The media was back on that day. So, Brentwood personnel were assigned to effect rescue of the driver still in the cab. Crews quickly developed a plan of action and established multiple rope lowering systems to access and remove the trapped driver. Through precise skill, no further injuries occurred, and the driver was safely removed. As a result of their actions, members were recognized by the Greater St. Louis County Fire Chiefs Association for their quick and professional actions. All members were part of a unit citation issued by the Greater St. Louis Fire Chiefs, which included Captain Rick Kerr, Lieutenant John Youngblood, firefighter Bob Carver, firefighter James Teson, firefighter paramedic Tim Iovaldi, firefighter paramedic Nick Mayer, and firefighter paramedic Chris Cosmos. In addition to the unit citation, Lieutenant John Youngblood received a Class I Gold Medal of Valor. This award is presented to cases involving a degree of danger characterized as extreme personal risk with the highest degree of judgment, zeal, and ingenuity. So, I will present John his Gold Medal of Valor. In addition to John's actions that day, in my opinion, as fire chief, one medal was overlooked, and that is for firefighter paramedic Tim Iovaldi. On that day, Tim was John's backup. His willingness was no less. He was capable. He was prepared. He was engaged, ready to go if needed. So, as fire chief, I'm awarding Tim Iovaldi a Medal of Bravery for his actions on that day. To the next event, which occurred November 22, 2021. Brentwood units, along with several mutual aid partners, we responded for a construction accident resulted in a long fall. When we arrived, we confirmed a construction worker had indeed fallen approximately 120 feet into a shaft of the sewer project. Patient was in and out of consciousness, and we determined immediately he required some serious medical attention. We were assisted by Maplewood, Clayton, and Kirkwood Fire Departments, and crews immediately began the rescue efforts. Led by Captain Jake Urshin, two members of our department were lowered into the shaft utilizing the onsite crane. This collaborative effort saved precious minutes in the overall operation. If you recall, last summer, in July, we trained on MSD site lowering rescuers into these shafts. It was predictable that we would need to utilize that training, and it saved this person's life. We saved precious minutes in the overall operation. All department personnel received training involving crane in the prior months. We successfully extricated the victim, provided excellent medical care, and transported to the most appropriate medical facility, all within an hour of the injury. It's unheard of, and something so technical as this. Tonight, it's my honor to present the Medal of Bravery to Captain Jake Urshin and firefighter paramedic Andrew Brinkman for their individual acts of bravery, personal bravery, in conjunction with their initiative and capabilities. Their quick and precise actions led to the successful rescue and treatment of this patient. In addition, the other members of the Brentwood Fire Department are to be commended for their actions on that day. Receiving a certificate of excellence, our Assistant Chief Bernie, Lieutenant Medical Officer Marcus Herman, firefighter Tim Hammer, firefighter paramedic Seth Carey, firefighter paramedic Catherine St. George, and firefighter paramedic Clay Bannerman. Last one. But nonetheless, no less important. A shift and the two officers to come on in, please. On Tuesday, January 11, 2022, Brentwood units, assisted by the Brentwood Police Department, responded for a report of a patient suffering a seizure at a Brentwood business. Upon arrival, crews found a 35-year-old male patient in cardiac arrest. Immediately, CPR and advanced medical care were initiated by all on-scene responders. Their quick actions and tireless efforts resulted in the successful resuscitation of this patient, who was admitted to the ICU at a local hospital. The one thing that I want to ad lib on is the cooperation and the tireless efforts that this crew put in that day. Firefighters were like, this would not have been possible without the two officers, and how they just were all in to save this guy. Thank you, guys. So, it's my honor to present a certificate of excellence to members of the Brentwood Police Department and Fire Department for their outstanding professionalism and teamwork. Sergeant Josh Bowersox, Corporal Ben Drexel, Captain David Niemeyer, Lieutenant Robert Flamian, firefighter Larry Drexler, firefighter paramedic Don Bushdiker, firefighter paramedic
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Anytime, chief. You know, if we didn't have so many superstars in our police and fire department, these meetings might not last as long, but I know the board is thrilled to be able to honor all the efforts. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing, and that is a public hearing on the text amendment amending Section 400.1380(c) conditional uses in E.1 use regulations in the PD Planned Development Overlay District. Just a little background on this. This public hearing that I'm about to gavel open is not related to the text amendment that is on the agenda later on, which is Bill Number 6374. This is a text amendment that has been submitted by Donald Stafford of Cornerstone Brentwood The purpose of the proposed amendment to this section would add apartment, add apartment buildings with an elevator to the list of conditional uses within the district. The proposed elevator apartment building would not be subject to a maximum height unless established as part of the conditional use permit. The proposed amendment to Section 400.1380(c) would allow for a greater number of units per acre for elevator apartment buildings. The density would only be limited as established by the conditional use permit. Currently, multifamily buildings are limited to a certain number of units per acre depending on the percentage of the development devoted to the multifamily use. So, with that, I will gavel open the public hearing for the text amendment amending Section 400.1380. Anybody in the public care to address or speak to that issue, that text amendment, now is the time to do so. Again, this is not the public hearing for the text amendment. That's later on in the meeting. We had that public hearing at last, at the last month's meeting. If you do want to speak on that issue, there will be an opportunity during public comment to do so. So, again, if there's anybody who wants to speak to this particular text amendment dealing with the apartment buildings, now is the time to do so. And seeing none, I will gavel close the public hearing on that proposed or the potential text amendment. That brings us on to, down to Item 6, Citizen Comments. Now's the opportunity, if anybody in the public cares to address the board on any topic, feel free to do so. If you want to, just go to the podium, if you would, give your name and your address, and you will be given up to three minutes. And if you don't want to speak now, there'll be another time later on in the meeting for another round of citizen comments. We're going to move on. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor and alderman reports. First up is the mayor. I have, I'm sorry. So, do we have somebody, Kelly? I'm sorry.
Lois raised her hand.
Okay. Lois Truman.
Lois, you can speak.
Unmute. I just unmuted, sorry.
We hear you, Lois.
Lois Truman, good evening. 8710 Rosalie Avenue. I have a question, if this is the time to ask, I don't, I hope, about the proposed car wash that's coming to the expansion of On the Run. And I'm wondering where I might find the information that justified having another car wash so close to two other fairly new ones right in our area.
Yeah. Lois, unfortunately, this is really, I'm not sure that this is the time for question and answer. But look, Kevin can weigh in on that. I don't.
If I may, mayor, there is no proposal for an expanded car wash, of which the city is aware, and the city is not considering such a proposal.
Oh, well, thank you. That is wonderful. Thank you. I will mute. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lois. Anybody else? If not, then we will move on to the meeting. Again, mayor's report, I have just one item. The item on the consolidation or merger of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board has been presented and discussed at both the Public Works Committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Board of Aldermen Agenda multiple times over the past one year and beyond. Listening to the last Public Works Committee meeting, it's clear to me that there is no consensus. Therefore, I am going to withdraw this bill from being brought forward at the March 21, 2022 Board of Aldermen meeting, and in so doing, I'm going to direct staff also to cancel the public hearing scheduled at the March 21, 2022 Board of Aldermen meeting. That is it for my report. Alderman Plufka. Ward 1 will have a ward meeting tomorrow night across the street at the rec center at 6:30. Alderwoman Tice.
I just want to, we often do thank yous for unusual events, but there's a very common event that, which is minutes for the meeting, and I just want to compliment Kelly for getting us like nicely written, efficient, or you know, timely minutes to the meetings. So, thank you for doing that. Somewhat mundane, but very important job.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Sims.
Ward 2 will also be having a ward meeting tomorrow night at the rec center, starting at 6:00, and we are certainly hoping to, as per usual, exceed the attendance by Ward 1's meeting by a substantial amount.
Excess parking. Excess parking and shuttle buses will be available.
No comment. And also, I just want to echo the appreciation and admiration of our police and fire departments that were on display here tonight. We hear about those stories. I'm grateful that I get to hear about those stories frequently on public safety, but they're certainly a source of pride.
Thank you. Dueling ward meetings. That would be fun. You can just go from room to room, I would imagine. Alderman Waggie.
Why leave Ward 2 when you don't need to? So, just, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Dan and his team, a resident brought to Dan's attention to my attention that there was an ADA issue on a sidewalk. It was not obvious. I had walked past it, and it was not clear to me that there actually was an issue, but it was basically the width of the sidewalk was such that a wheelchair could not get through. And I appreciate the resident for bringing that to our attention and following up on it. That has been fixed. And again, you know, we rely on our residents to kind of be our eyes and ears. When you see a problem, please let us know, so we can go fix it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmiller.
No report.
Alderman Gould.
Yes, the Ward 3 meeting will not be tomorrow night to compete with. But it will be on Tuesday, March 29 at 7:00 PM. We're working on getting a room at the rec center, and so, you know, look on social media in our next meeting for details on that. If we can't get a room, we will hold it virtually as we have in the past.
Thank you. Alderman Shelton.
No report.
And Alderwoman O'Neal.
No report.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us down to Item 8, the City Administrator Report. We have two items. The first is the Brentwood Bound update.
I will be giving that report tonight.
I didn't see Craig.
Mr. Schluter is not present tonight. So, this is the Brentwood Bound update dated March 7, 2022. We have four different categories on this report. Construction cost, where we present the budget, $47 million. Total spent to date, $21,367,991.81. And we also show the total amount that has been spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting, $272,716.16. Second category is the soft cost. Total budget on that is $14,031,759. Total spent to date is $12,285,631.97. Total spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting is $167,085.99. And then the third category is the property acquisition. Total budget on that is $29,536,244. Total spent to date is $29,527,131,006. And the last category is contingency. We budgeted about $10,838,492. Total committed to date is $6.5 million, and there remains an uncommitted balance of $4.3 million. Total budget for the Brentwood Bound project is $95,344,460. And at the bottom of the report, we have the different categories of funding, which include city funds and a variety of partnerships with different agencies, Missouri Department of Transportation, Great Rivers Greenway, Great Rivers Habitat Alliance, and more. Questions?
Questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item is the KEB Independent Accountants' Report on Applying Agreed-Pon Procedures and How the City Spends the Certificate of Participation Proceeds Both the 2018 and the 2019 Funds. The representatives from KEB are not here tonight. We have a good reason for that. They have found no exceptions. So, the report is in board docs, and we're in compliance with the city's policy. It's a lot of work that goes into paying all the invoices, not just this, but you know, regular operating funds. So, we're happy that, you know, we're following city procedures and staying in compliance.
That is good news. No one's here. Great. Any questions for the city administrator on that report? Okay. That will bring us down to Item 9, the Consent Agenda. We have a number of items under that. Anybody have any questions about any of those items or requests to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? If none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Waggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Yes.
Alderman Shelton.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of 8 to 0.
Great. Thank you. That drops us down to Item 10, Old Business. We have one matter under that, and that is Bill Number 6374. Can we get a second reading by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill Number 6374, second reading in consideration for adoption and ordinance amending Sections 400.1370 and 400.1380 of the zoning code relating to conditional uses in the general commercial district and the PD Planned Development Overlay Districts.
Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6374 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Waggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, bill number 6374 will become ordinance number 5008.
Great, thank you. That moves us down to item 11, new business. Again, we just have one item under that, and that is bill number 6376. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6. Sorry. Bill number 6376, first reading in ordinance amending section 400.1380 relating to elevator apartment buildings in the PD Plan Development Overlay District.
And Whitney, are you presenting on this?
Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the city of Brentwood. If you can, just Whitney, give me a minute. Whitney, walk into the mic. Okay. The Plan Development Overlay is intended by site plan approval and other procedures set forth to promote and encourage the appropriate development of retail office and multifamily residential developments. And to relate those in the scale of, for a higher density. Is to provide a scale and flexibility of development which could not otherwise achieve through fixed single zone use zoning districts. Currently, the Plan Development Overlay District allows list uses permitted in the MR District multifamily residential. However, the units are limited by the percentage of the project. For 80 to 100%, you are limited to 20 units per acre. The applicant's Cornerstone Development is interested in a property that is 3.6 acres in, off of Hanley Road. And therefore, and it would be a high-rise multifamily development with approximately 72 units per acre. So therefore, they are seeking a new, a text amendment to allow for greater review and allow for greater density within the Plan Development Overlay District, consistent with the vision of the Plan Development Overlay District. Specific site and design-related issues for any development would then be addressed as part of that conditional use permit. So it would include adding the multi-tenant apartment and condo buildings with elevator at a heightened density as established by the conditional use permit as an allowed use under the conditional use permit for the PD District. And then we would have an asterisk next to where the current density per acre is to allow for as allowed or established by the conditional use. The PD already has restrictions where adjacent to residential, so therefore, we, we felt that those were already sufficient in that any building over four stories or 52 feet in height and up to six feet where adjacent to a residential district have to have a setback of 100 feet. This would not, this particular property, while the text amendment is for the PD in whole, this particular property is not adjacent to any residential districts. And the concern along Brentwood Boulevard, I think, is sufficiently handled due to the height restriction and setbacks. Therefore, the Planning and Development, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at a unanimous vote. And the applicants are here, if you wish to ask any questions.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Whitney, why is, we've done several of these high-density apartment buildings using the UD, urban development. Why can this not be used at this site?
When we initially sat down with the applicant, the UD District limits a building height on properties between two and four acres to six feet and, or 75 feet in height. Under the PD District, it allows for higher under the conditional use permit that is not currently in the UD District. And therefore, we felt the existing zoning was more appropriate for that, because they were initially wanting, considering going up a higher floor than six floors. And they're currently zone PD, so it was just a matter of matching the density with the scale of the development.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Whitney? Alderwoman Sims.
I just want to, I, I think I understand it, but just to make sure, everyone watching. So this would make it possible for a higher-density condominium or building structure to go, grow into this area, but only as a conditional use, is that right?
Correct.
So the process of kicking the tires, looking at the plans, you know, throwing the developer over the barrel to make sure landscaping and density, all that, that will come.
That will come at a later date. They needed the text amendment in order to properly design, note, for the project, yeah.
Right, and so this just puts it in the realm of the possible under our existing zoning classifications. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Correct. So as part of the CUP, we would get into, well, in any real development, we get into the traffic impacts, the overall design, impacts on the site, that kind of thing. Landscaping, yeah.
And I know that the, the site that's in mind here doesn't, doesn't back up to any residential areas, but it's, just to emphasize what you said earlier, it's not as if this kind of development could, would be eligible to be in front of a residential area because of the setbacks that are already baked into our comprehensive plan, is that right? In our zoning.
Correct. I mean, the density would be, could be higher than the 20 units per acre if it's along, say Brentwood Boulevard. But the height is still limited with the setback and the smaller size of the properties along Brentwood Boulevard or Manchester for that matter. So it's limited to, if you're two to four, if you, yeah, if you're two and a half stories to four stories, then the minimum setback is 50 feet for a building adjacent to any single-family residential district. And any building over four stories or 52 feet in height and up to six stories or 75 shall have a minimum building setback of 100 feet from any single-family residential district. So we would get into the review of those should a project in other parts of the PD District come forward.
But even that, that, it would still be a conditional use, right?
Correct.
So certainly, we'd cross that bridge if, and when we ever get to it, but there would be an opportunity to determine whether that would be appropriate. It's not as if we're ceding that ability by changing this text, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. So building on Alderwoman Sims' concerns, or at least your question, I'm looking at the blocks between Litzinger and Madge on the west side of Brentwood Boulevard. Wouldn't the setbacks be big enough there to, or the, the depth of PD be big enough that we could be talking about taller buildings immediately adjacent to residences farther to the west?
I mean, I, Madge?
So Litzinger to the north, Madge to the south, Brentwood Boulevard to the east, those blocks within PD to the west. Basically, the block that, that involves Walgreens.
Oh, okay.
Our, our rec center, but then also private development to the south, Eagle Bank and the like. And then also all the way to Madge, the two zoned lots that are there right at the corner of Madge. It seems to me that the setback there, if somebody were to purchase both of those units, they could put, what, four stories there, given the setbacks?
I mean, that, that is the current regulation now. This text amendment only allows for the flexibility of, under the CUP, for a greater density than the 20 units per acre.
Right.
But it's currently, I mean, I don't want to get into subjective review without seeing a specific project, but, I mean, it is possible to currently now have a four-story building if they meet the set, all of the setback requirements of the zoning district.
Right, but this change allows for greater density within that same format.
Right.
So.
Greater units per acre. But we'd still have to get, they'd still have to meet with the parking requirements for that, site, site impacts, site coverage.
I mean, I understand what you said in your original presentation, that along Brentwood Boulevard, most of the, the width of the Plan Development District is not big enough to affect really any change based upon this text ordinance change.
Well, I was just, I was just thinking.
Those parcels that I just mentioned, those would subject to greater density.
Right, but I was thinking of greater than six floors, six stories, where the setback would then be 100 feet.
Okay, but it doesn't, doesn't that mean?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, it's hard to know what the.
Now I lost my page.
Without getting an actual project before us. But the current regulations do allow for.
If I may, Mr. Plufka.
Yeah.
And I don't want to intrude on your discussion, but, I mean, that's part of the conditional use permit process. It's not a use of right. This would be a conditional use of, this enhanced density and height would be subject to a conditional use permit, which of course would take into consideration site-specific considerations such as proximity and conflicting land uses that are nearby.
But if we take it into account, and we're changing the text to allow for greater density, isn't the burden on us to justify why we would restrict it to a particular applicant?
No, it would be dependent on the evidence presented on a conditional use permit application at the time. So the, the burden, first of all, is on the applicant to demonstrate that they're eligible to receive the conditional use permit. And then, of course, the information and evidence that the city would present would be considered as to whether or not to grant it.
Okay, so I, my only concern was that we were opening up, perhaps, to greater density in that block especially, just because of the, the depth with which PD goes back into the residential areas. That was my, that was my only concern about this. Is that not, is that not a real concern? I guess maybe it's not a real concern.
Don't, the question of what's a real concern is up to you and the rest of the board.
Well, okay. Thank you for that. But, but I just.
You don't pay me enough to make those trades.
Right, 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 right.
And no one could, I might add, but. But it, it does, it may indeed create a circumstance where someone would try to take advantage and cram an awful lot into a small area. But that's where then the judgment of the board comes into play in terms of the granting the permit.
And I was thinking mostly the parcels that are, as you get closer to Manchester Road, that's, that would mean, seem logical to me that if there was a developer with, with an idea of such a highly, a more highly dense development, they would want to be close to Manchester Road and, you know, and all that. And I just looked at these parcels and thought.
But also, the, the regulations, at least the ordinance, has to be uniform throughout the district. So if we're gonna have the opportunity for that to occur elsewhere in the district, we need to amend the text, so.
I understand that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Lockmiller.
If, if we do this text amendment for PD and the project does not go through and is built, this text amendment remains in place for all the PD zoning.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? The applicant is here. If one of you could just come to the podium for a second. It's come to my attention that you are requesting a second read tonight, is that right?
That's correct, Your Honor.
And what would be the reason for that?
Well, we're on a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you just please state your name?
You know who I am. For Your Honor and members of the board, and for Mr. O'Keefe, my name is Mike Doster. I'm the land use attorney on the development team for Cornerstone Brentwood. And yes, we are requesting a second reading tonight. As you might suspect, we've been working on this for quite a long time. We met with staff initially to try to determine which direction we were going to take in terms of zoning. And it was ultimately determined that staying with PD would be appropriate. But that meant that we had to have the text amendment before we could even submit to the city an application for conditional use permit. So our process has been elongated as a result. And we are running up against some time limits. There are some concerns about whether or not we can hold the terms on our financing, and a whole host of issues. So the more time that we can save at the front end of the process, the better off we'll be, and the more likely it will be that we'll be able to submit something that the city, that the city would find acceptable.
Okay, okay, thank you. So with that, we hear that's the request for a second read tonight. Does anybody on the board care to, to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One? Okay, so we have a count, my count, we have six ayes and two nays on the motion for a second read. So with that, Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill 63, I think it's 75, by title only?
Bill number 6376.
76.
Develop an overlay district.
Chair would entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6376 into ordinance form?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
So could I go a little deeper into the Plufka thing? I think we talked it out, but like I, he raised an excellent point. This, this, the entire part sort of from Walgreens to the car place at the corner of, of Brentwood and Manchester. Are we, by doing this, even though it has to come back through, sort of committing ourselves to allowing like an eight or 10-story building so close to residential? I mean, I know each, I mean, I appreciate that each one has to come through, but there's.
I'm sorry, but was that a question?
I said, I, yeah, I guess it is a question, it just seems.
If, that was directed to.
Yeah, it seems precedent-setting.
If, if it was directed to me, I would say that you are committing yourself to allow people to apply for it, but you're certainly not committing to grant that application. Just as with conditional uses in a whole plethora of districts and uses.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Lockmiller.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Sure, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me get closer. Why not attack, why not rezone to urban development and then request a text amendment if, if that's not quite fitting your, your needs here? I mean, it's hard for us to make a judgment because I don't have anything in front of me of what your project looks like yet. What's wrong with our plan development zoning that keeps you from use, going that route instead of text amendment?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that, Mr. Alderman. First of all, when we first came into the city to discuss with Bola and with Whitney, a concept that we had in mind for the particular property, we thought that urban district might be, or urban development might be the right district to pursue. There were some issues with respect to that. But the most important issue, I think, that was raised by staff was that you're going to end up with an island of urban zoning in the middle of a district that's already zone planned district. And so there are multiple properties included in that district, and you would be carving out of that district this particular property. I think that was the actual terminology, if I'm not misquoting you, that you'd end up with an island of urban district in the middle of a planned district. So after discussing that with, with Whitney and with Bola, we determined that, okay, it might be making more sense if we, in terms of planning and zoning, if we just left it in the PD, which it already was, and asked for a text amendment to allow us to ask for a conditional use permit. And, and again, I, I know I'm probably repeating what others have said, but we're not asking you to approve anything with respect to our project tonight. We knew that you would be curious about it. And we had been informed that we should be prepared to talk a little bit about our concept. We don't even have our final plans ready to submit to the city. We have a concept. And so we knew that we couldn't go forward with that concept unless we had the text amendment. And all that does is add another tool, and our, this is our perspective, of course. It adds a tool to your toolbox. And rather than saying, well, somebody might ask for it in a place where we don't want it, somebody might ask for it in a place where you do want it. So it gives you another tool that you can use. And I hesitate to say, make this final point in front of Kevin, but cities have broad discretion under a conditional use permits. And if the circumstances don't justify granting it, then you don't grant it.
Thank you.
You're gonna use that, I know.
Yeah, I, make sure that's in the minutes, if you would.
Do we have any other? Do we have any other questions or comments? Alderman Plufka?
Well, just to kind of echo what Alderman Lockmiller, the concern and the concern raised by Alderman Tice, I think this does change the so-called, I mean, put it in terms that I can understand, it changes sort of the burden of proof here. If this is a part of, of the text amendment, and not concerning this project, but I'm talking, thinking about the future of planned development, we have a greater burden with this language in the text amendment to justify declining any conditional use permit application, and we have to act with certain rationality and certain explanation, whereas that burden is not on us to as great an extent if this amendment is not in the text itself. And I believe that, that that's worth considering, and my concern goes more to staggering the readings here and the motion before us as to having a second reading, not so much that I'm against this in any way, but just that I'd like, I'd like an opportunity to think about it, and I'd like an opportunity for my constituents and the constituents of the rest of the city of Brentwood to consider that, because I do think this does have an impact beyond just this application, certainly it does, since planned development is, is the zone development, or is the zoning on both sides of Brentwood Boulevard for the entire length of Brentwood Boulevard as it pertains to the city of Brentwood practically. Anyway, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a, with that motion to perfect 6376 into ordinance form having been made in second, can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Plufka? Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
We're making a motion to perfect this, so if-
Yeah, it passed the question of staggered reading.
It passed the staggered reading.
Yeah. This is the vote to, to perfect 6376 in the ordinance form. We had the motion to perfect and it was seconded.
No, no, you're right.
Okay.
Can the motion be withdrawn?
If someone wishes to defer the vote on passage, the motion would be to table the bill to the next agenda.
Motion to table until the March-
22nd?
21st meeting.
Motion to table is in order.
Motion to table has been made by Alderman Tice. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Is voice vote good enough on that, or, okay, all in favor of sustaining the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's do a rule call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
No.
Alderman Waggy?
No.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of six to two, motion, oh, motion carries to table.
Motion to table is sustained by the count of vote of six to two, so we'll have a second read on this bill at the next meeting, which is going to be the 22nd or the 21st?
21st.
21st. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the discussion, and I appreciate you taking it up at least.
Thank you. That brings us down to item 12, citizens and comments. Once again, if anybody in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. Just come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given up to three minutes. Come on down.
Hi. My name's Barbara Eichler. I am daughter of Norm Eichler, who lives at 8778 Brentwood Place, and there were some comments back here, the mobile on the run building there waiting for my mom to die, so I don't want to hear that, but I had to put a little humor there. We have not heard a plan, they haven't brought it forth, so the, the text amendment would preclude, I'm just kind of putting it out there so you guys can tell me if I'm right or not. So the text amendment would, would basically kill that development if it passes, is that correct?
It passed.
Oh, I'm sorry, it did pass. Well, then there's no sense in me talking about it, is there?
You made the trip.
Because I was, I was going to make the point that, you know, Wallace Company, I know they're very upset about being precluded from even pursuing it, because I was concerned, that mobile station's been there since I was a kid, and they're doing a very good business. The traffic getting out of there is really bad because it's too small. So their plan to expand it further down was actually going to be a benefit to Brentwood Place, but since I don't know the plan and you guys have said no to it, I guess it's done. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you.
And my mom is feeling fine, so.
Your Honor, can I, can I ask for a clarification on what just happened? I mean, we, we voted on a text amendment having nothing to do with a specific application, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I, I know that there's been some discussion on social media and residents have shown up over the last few, last couple of meetings and at P&amp;Z meetings to talk specifically about a particular business, and that text amendment that was passed by the board tonight, it's important to note, it did not identify any particular business. You know, it's, it was more about, or that bill was no more about warehouses than it was about orphanages. It sets out what are permitted uses and what are conditional uses, what can be located in those zone districts. And the text amendment was simply an attempt to try to make those two zoning districts more in conformity with our comprehensive plan. There are a lot of what we'll call our conditional uses that were, that were permitted under the old zoning district that are no longer permitted as a result of this text change or text amendment that was passed tonight. And, you know, if you just look online, you'll see what those, I don't want to list them because I might forget some, but, you know, certainly there are quite a few that were permitted or conditional uses that are no longer conditional uses as a result of this text amendment. Alderman Waggy?
One quick Aldermanic response, just, I'd like to thank everybody who came and spoke at P&amp;Z meetings, who called and emailed, came by the house, dropped off letters, so that feedback is very, very important and your voice is heard, so thank you very much for taking your time to do that.
Anybody else in the public care to address the board? Yes, come on down, please, just-
My name's Chad Wallace, and we are the owner of the mobile station that's been discussed, and I'm second generation. My mom and dad started our company when my dad came back from Vietnam. We're 50 years into our business, and the third generation was sitting right behind me, my niece, they ended up leaving just because we just, you know, obviously it's a no vote, so I'm standing up here just giving you my, our perspective of, I mean, a little bit of shame that I think that what you just said is kind of not the case, and it did discriminate against our business, and we are trying to be a good participant in this community and have been a good participant, and we continue to do that in all the communities that we operate these stores and make these big investments in. And this does put us in a non-competitive disadvantage, it makes it unsafe, it really puts the city of Brentwood in a bad spot, and I think continues to leave the city of Brentwood in a position where they're not competitive. And so just speaking, you know, it's been tough with COVID, as all of you guys know with the business and everything else, and then to have something like this come down as well, we're a local family that operates in the community, and this doesn't make any sense to me, and so I just wanted to make sure you all knew that, so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Anybody else? Come on down to the podium.
Hi, my name's Lynn Good, 8783 Brentwood Place. So my understanding is the text amendment did pass, in other words, it would prevent certain kinds of auto-oriented businesses, okay. Thank you. Because I think that's, that amendment is critical for moving Brentwood in a direction that I think so many people have been trying to move it, to make quality of life better in Brentwood in general for the entire city, and what kinds of businesses fit, and what kinds of businesses can take away from a neighborhood and make it difficult to get in and out of our streets and walk in our area. So I think we're improving safety, we're improving our community, and I am so proud of Brentwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the board?
I'm also very proud of Brentwood, because I was going to say to you all, there are 80 people that live on Brentwood Place and Bridgeport, and if we put two people in those houses, that's the, you know, times two, plus we put children that are walking all around that area going to your Brentwood schools, and as your alderman, the fourth alderman man that was here that just retired, you are in a shooting star position. You can either go back and have a big hunk of mobile oil sitting there and having that as the vision of Brentwood, or you can upgrade yourselves to make yourselves look good. It's an opportunity for Brentwood, and you're a lovely community, but I do think it's been a disservice to the Brentwood Place. I, I think that area has taken a toll on its price values and its home values, and I think that's unfair to do that to 80 residents. And once again, would you like this at the top of your street? Would you like this? You have to remember, take it home to your house and put that big filling station at the top of your street. I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kate Twenty, 8724 Bridgeport Avenue, 63144, very proud Brentwood resident. Me and my husband moved here in 2015. We found the cutest little house, so excited to move here. Trails, I was pregnant, there were four different playgrounds we could walk to, and that's what I love about Brentwood, it is walkable, there's greenery everywhere, there's a woods, for goodness sake, in the back of our house, a creek, I mean, it's like a little, you know, patch of nature. So I'd be willing to go in and buy this property from the walaces, anybody want to get in with me? And we'll turn it into a park! But I was so proud of the whole board tonight, I came here to, you know, I'm also a scientist, I study Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, neurodegenerative disease, and there is a definite link between pollution. I don't know about specifically gasoline-related pollution, but it increases the ground ozone, the little boots that they have, if they don't work, there's up to 10 times the recommended amount of vapors, including carcinogenic benzene, that gets released, and so, you know, we just don't need that, you know? They do fine, you know, there's no accidents there, you know, would we like it maybe not even to be there, I don't know, but, you know, we don't need more of that, and I'm really proud of why everybody spoke up, you know, I know they're a family business, you know, I think there's, you know, value in that as well, but in terms of having that in our neighborhood, I'm glad that we're reserving that use for the, you know, comprehensive plan, what the comprehensive plan set out to do, so I'll stop rambling, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Elaine Reed, I live at 8708 Garden Court, and I'm very glad that it didn't pass, because mobile sign that they have out there, I have the hardest time getting in and out of that street. I called the city, they told me county had it, county told me they couldn't put a stop sign there, no, on mobile, or they just shoot by, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Anyone else?
Probably, I'm Mr. Etheridge, 8746 Brentwood Place, probably a bit late, because it's been passed, so thank you for doing that. I'm a behavioral economist, so I kind of looked at this through a kind of pragmatic, kind of rational lens, and when I weighed up the kind of losses and gains, there just really wasn't a lot of positive gain to this and just a lot of negative loss, so it's already a traffic hotspot trying to get in and out of Brentwood Place, there's been issues with kids crossing there to go to the mobile and getting caught in traffic and stuff like that, so that's been a big, big, big issue there, I think, also noise pollution. I live really close to where Lynn is, and I drive past her house every day, and I swear on my life, she's out there every day picking up trash from that mobile gas station, so I just appreciate all you've done for this, I apologize you came to the table a bit late here, but it seems like it's all in order, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up. Anyone else? And I too would like to echo what Alderman Waggy said, I've said it before, and I'm going to continue to say it, we, I say it on behalf of all the aldermen, we really do appreciate any time residents take the time out of their schedule to come up here and to be heard. You know, a lot of times, we, mainly the board, because they're the ones that vote on these things, not so much me, they try to make the best decisions that they can, trying to think what their constituents would want them to do, and a lot of times that's hard to do because you don't get a chance to talk to your constituents, so it's nice to hear from them, to help them and make the decisions that best represent you, because that's our form of government, is a representative form of government. So thank you for taking that, making that sacrifice for coming up here tonight. Seeing there's, yes, we have one more online?
Karen Smith.
Karen Smith, if you would, just unmute Karen and talk away.
Hi, Karen Smith on Harrison. Want to thank you for your discussion that you had tonight, I know there's been a couple of, I guess, ordinances that deal with tax amendments, but the very last one that you were discussing regarding the, I guess it was the height of the, of a potential building or the ability to increase density on plan, in a planned development district. I appreciated your discussion, I was a little disappointed that you all agreed to do a second reading tonight, which could have potentially meant that would have been approved, because I would have liked the opportunity to have more understanding of what that meant, it seemed like a pretty significant change to me, and I would have liked to have had the ability to talk to my alderman, and so I'm very grateful that you did table it so that I could have a chance to talk to my alderman, to understand a little bit more about what it actually means. It seems like it's fairly significant, or as I think Alderman Tice said, sets a precedence, and it seems to me that it's difficult to make even the decision when you don't really know what the plan is even going to look like, like it, it seems like we're asking for this before you have enough information to really make an informed decision, but again, I'm not sure if I understand quite everything that's going on yet, so again, I appreciate having the opportunity to talk to my alderman, I'm grateful that you tabled the discussion, or tabled the vote until next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? No one else online? Okay, thank you. So with that, we do have two items on closed meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Your Honor, I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting to executive session for the purposes of discussing legal issue under Chapter 610.021.1 and Real Estate, Chapter 610.021.2, and adjourned therefrom.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion carries by a foot of eight to zero.
Great, thank you. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene in the conference room.